Now we're ready.
We do have a quorum. Uh, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Both? Alright, so Rich Brom, good morning.
See, they're gonna be on for the Rock Code.
Oh, see him.
Not on there?
Okay.
Said something about not being on because of the rock.
You can give a quote for the Rock one.
Okay. Oh, yes, if Rich does come on maybe later, we'll go back to him.
Yep.
Uh, is there any drainage?
I was cleaning.
Drainage clean?
There'll be more next time. There's two different businesses this year.
Alright. General repairs, small items.
Make a motion to approve the drainage points.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? And none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Both? Motion carry.
And then I got a small clean.
Special clean.
For postage, Chelsea's back, so just get me some of those back and order again.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, let's uh, put a motion to approve the uh, special plane for postage.
So move.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? And none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both? Here.
Then post to yellow.
Okay. And also a motion to approve payroll.
Make a motion to payroll points.
Oh, second.
Any other discussion? And none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Both? Motion carry. Okay. Winworth Becko, hi Melissa.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Working on some marketing stuff. And I'd like to move forward with that whole little shovel proposal, it'd be easy out, change their mind later.
Explain that to us again.
Yeah.
It would uh, be uh, it focused on marketing, so we get an all new website, but they'd also do a lot of editorial. And take a lot off of the plate that way, but also, main reason why I'm on this board is because they specialize in economic development. So we can get the ball rolling on the casino interchange. And we can do, hopefully do a campaign more in depth than just what, you know, we do that extra time to do it.
No cost to this.
There is, um, but there's thirty day out and it's not like there's any, it's an easy out. So we just call them and say, hey, we're done, and then they refund us whatever we haven't used. And then uh, so then we can tell, we can also converse with them and where we want to focus every month. The articles, and then we can push out the um, the articles that are, is written on that.
And is it possible to, maybe get a developer to buy the whole work? If you look down that road, I mean, that's something you, so they can't worry about just, have somebody buy the whole works and make profit and move on, huh?
This would probably help and that.
It would help push it out and, because they, they do economic development throughout the entire country. So not only would be, I mean, it would, it basically, they have contacts, so anything that they promote on our website, then we can push it out to, it'll, it'll just go.
Just mushroom.
Yeah, it'll go a lot farther. And we can go over the contracts at our next business board meeting, I just want to get the ball rolling. It does take about two months for them to get started. I'd like to get this done before.
It's ready to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a next meeting?
Um, I had it on my books for July sixteenth.
What time?
Eleven thirty is when we usually meet.
You're free.
Yeah.
Thirteenth.
There's a change.
That's fine, we can, we can work in a row.
No, we're gonna be, might be busy that whole day, I suppose.
Um, that's the BD two.
Do you wanna, I don't want to do July sixth.
You said July sixteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
We can do it later that week, well Monday, that Monday just not been for us.
We can do a change or something.
Tuesday, it might have to be official like noon or twelve thirty, saying I want to beg your call.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Do what works for them, I guess.
Works for them.
When, do we want to do a Zoom meeting, or do we want to do it in person?
In person.
If I was gonna, I'd like to see the Zoom meeting, you know, and I mean, it's.
Put the Zoom option out there, yeah, and then that's why he left Mark, wants to listen, and if he's on vacation, then he can.
It'd be okay, we're always discussing economic development, doesn't work out Zoom meetings, if they can do it, people want to listen in.
Yeah.
Yeah, what you're trying to do. They're complaining, they can listen in what, what their thoughts are.
Yeah, and offer that to those guys, see what, see what time works best for them, I guess.
Okay.
And we can just make it work for us.
And we can move to the other office in the building if we want to spread out a little bit more.
Sounds good. Sounds good, so we can make that decision at our meeting then, right? Yeah, we can wait that long, right?
Well, I was going to start getting the ball rolling, only because of the fiscal year, we can do the first payment in the fiscal year, kind of split it out.
Sure.
But if you'd rather waste that time.
What do I get that going soon, or why not do it to, next Monday?
Move the meeting, Anthony?
We can do that, I just won't have the complete financial report, if that's fine. Because I don't get the expenditure report, so the first couple of days of the month.
You can get that out to us at any time.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to move on to that golden shovel project, I mean, that would be the, we gotta get rolling on it.
I thought it should be in action, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, for a final, just versus us chatting about it here, I'm having a chat about it.
I can um, aim for June twenty ninth then.
Yeah, well, there's no brain meeting that week.
Move to next Monday. It's Monday, it's next Monday, so yeah, just try that.
Okay.
Just say the one thing I need to generate, go for that.
Okay.
It's gonna be a Sunday, you call in.
Eleven thirty? Eleven thirty, okay?
Should be.
Yeah.
And then the advisory board meeting, I have scheduled the fifteenth of July.
Is that all of you or not?
No, it's usually one. That's all the managers and everybody else.
Um, I think it's weeks ten.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, maybe we can get some.
I'll send you guys the proposal again, to show them through. Right, it is my favorite song.
Yeah. Cool, sounds good. Alright, is Jason on there today?
So, Rich is on there too.
Uh, Jason Petersberg.
I am on. Uh, not a lot new going on out there. Um, obviously the rain slowed things down here a little bit again. I do believe we've finally come to terms with Boyd as far as how we're gonna shape that lot. Met with the local guys there end of last week. Went over who is doing what as far as getting rid of some of the stuff that was in the way. Friday morning, they did do quite a bit of that, got their stuff removed. So as soon as the weather cooperates here, sounds like the last semi that they needed to get in and out of there was done last Friday. As soon as the weather dries out, they will take care of that grading work, fill in that area and, the light, there was a light that was off of their lot that needed to be relocated. We also discussed that Friday morning. At the end of the conversation, it was agreed that they're gonna put a new light on the outside of the building. Relocate the camera to a different pole that's in the way, and then there just won't be a standalone light that's in the way, heavy motor around her at risk of being run over. Since the county's the developer, it's part of the project, we were gonna get pricing on that. And add that to the contract as part of a change order, I requested the price, I was hoping to have that before this morning's meeting, but I haven't, haven't received it yet, so. But it's in the works, so.
Sounds good. They're all okay with everything else, right? As far as the grading and?
As far as I can tell, it was a little bit of a challenge, but I think they've got a better understanding on it now.
Perfect. And when uh, I know they're gonna start building the, the base for the road, is there any idea on paving yet, you heard?
They have told the paving contractor that they're planning to be ready by uh, the week of the fourth of July, so. I would hope to see them in there in July, mainline, just take a couple of days and they'll have that done, and but then the handwork tie-ins will take a little, little extra time. It'll go quick once they do show up.
Oh, okay. That'd be great. Okay, anything for Jason, you guys, or?
Congratulations on your promotion.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, take care of Mr. Manager, we'll see ya. Thanks, Jason. Alright, uh, Rich, I see you're on there now, do you have anything to discuss?
Yeah, sorry about that, I had somebody in the office here and I couldn't get away. Um, just an update, the wind tower people are still out, uh, they're stabilizing roads, um, they did some cement stabilization last week, and it, it makes a heck of a difference out there on some of them roads, so um, they did uh, four hundred and ninetieth from uh, I think it's Thrush going uh, east, or I mean, west. And uh, they're working on that section going a little further now too, um, getting pretty, it's, it's really stable, they're rocking it right now. There are some roads that are gonna need some attention on, on their part from the excessive travel, so I'll get ahold of them and see if, you know, the rain didn't help, but uh, we'll see if they can kind of shape some things up here when it dries out a little bit. The HMA prod, the asphalt projects, we have infertile and, and uh, and uh, South Manly and Grafton, they might start a little earlier, it sounds like now. Um, Al's meeting with them in fertile now to discuss where we're gonna do some patching, so. Just a heads up that it might come in a little quicker than we thought. And then, other than that, I'm doing, getting some rock quotes in here by nine o'clock, so we'll get our rock round going here. Once I award them, we're gonna let them start whenever they feel like starting, which could be as early as today or tomorrow, so. That's all I've got for you on uh, on an update. Anything you have to discuss? Okay, I'm gonna scoot out, you guys can always call or something if you need it, something.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Good.
Alright, uh, Arlen Throne, antique car time trial, request for airport road closing, this kind of an annual thing, I saw that letter, an email, I guess.
Motion to approve that. Make a motion to approve the time trial. Closing.
Yes, second, there's a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion?
Been doing that since two thousand three. Was first on the board, we, we got many compliments that, that, you thanked the board, he was second guy that run this, but couldn't believe how easy it was for the board to do this, they really appreciated it and are going to do that. We're getting a lot of nice people coming.
So hopefully they can get to have it, so.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Both? Motion will carry. I'm sure they'll be contacting Road Department and all, they do all that, so. Alright, uh, any reports? None. Federal eligibility, seller changes, cigarettes?
The Joe Stop.
Time of Joe Stop?
Yeah.
Right, their gas station?
Yeah.
Sure. Motion to approve the cigarette license, the, the Joe Stop gas station?
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Both? Motion carry.
I'm opposed for the year.
That's a good new one, right?
Yeah.
Newer management plan.
That word, delete.
Uh, turkey, is right.
Kind of changes or, I make a motion to acknowledge newer management plan.
Second. Okay, motion and second to acknowledge a newer management plan for delete turkey form, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Both? Motion carry. Building issues in the accessory office.
Did I, I can't remember if I forwarded the emails from Levi.
Hmm, nope.
Yeah, I probably forgot, Levi, um,
Just pipe and stuff, yeah, or?
Is, yeah, he would be willing to get going, but we also need a contractor and it sounds, and we're trying to figure out timing and stuff, and it sounds like who was doing it does not have time now, so I need to know if there's anybody else that, contractor wise, that would be looking for something to do.
What are they looking, just tear the whole floor up off there, or?
Whatever they have to do to get to what they need to get to.
Get access to get the piping, huh?
They could even have to get in the concrete, I don't know.
So.
Depending on how far they gotta go.
Right.
But the boiler's off now, and that's what we were waiting for, and so, we just gotta figure out what works, because he figured it may cut, may take at least a week. At, at the most, so, um.
So is it, I mean, we get a bid, or are we gonna wait and just say, time, material plus ten percent, I mean, this is, this is a bid, this is something you could, you couldn't, you can't bid it because you're gonna go.
You don't know what, you don't know what it's gonna end up being.
So I'd be, be better off if you, the time and material plus ten percent, be done with it.
But we need to find that person.
We need to find that person.
Yeah.
That's something that's probably, that's probably so busy.
Does he have any suggestions or?
No.
Yeah.
He, he just figured a lot of them are probably getting booked out. He, he would be happy to reach out to anybody that you guys can think of, or?
Right.
And he wondered about who had done stuff in the past, well Bill is the one who's done stuff in the past, and Bill's trying to back out of that stuff to retire, and I don't blame him, so we gotta find a new Bill.
Yeah. Office spaces, yeah.
So if you guys can think on that, and you can either get Levi or mean, names that I can pass on to Levi. That'd be great. And I just forwarded emails to you.
How busy people are, and.
Yeah. That's the thing, it's not a lot, it's so much.
Well, and I think this would be kind of on call, because you know, well, and I guess it'd be just like any other construction, Levi, they're gonna have to do so much, and Levi's gonna have to do so much, so it'd be, or if it was somebody local.
Right.
But.
Twelve miles.
Yeah.
Building law, or something like that. I know he's doing some jobs right now too, like everybody else.
Yeah, Mark Holbe would be another one.
Just contact a couple of them, I guess, and see who's.
Contact Springer too.
Springer, yeah.
You want me to do them?
I, let's, let's uh, just throw those names at Levi, with him.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause he's got the court with it.
Yeah.
Easier to him, so throw those, if you got their names and contacts, then we'll just send them to Levi.
But we'd like to have a court of what you, what, what they want for.
Yeah.
Labor, right, hour and rate, hour and rate, kind of hour and rate, and we'd just like to take that, like ten percent. We don't know what, we have the unknowns.
Right. Absolutely.
Yeah.
We have a lot of the unknowns, and it's a lot easier to uh, get a contractor to do, to bid it that way, he's, you know, he's guaranteed his time, material plus ten.
Right.
He's, he's happy with that.
Right.
He's not gonna lose his shirt, he's not gonna, he's not gonna,
Right.
We don't have to pay for some extra.
Yeah, exactly.
We don't have to pay for extras. Alright, might not be there.
Right, yeah. Nah, we're not taking the bid for the worst case scenario, best case scenario.
Yeah. But they make, they make money and they don't, so can make their wages and, you know, have something to carry around, so.
And we're not moving them out of their office during that.
We don't, um, we were trying to shoot for July, the week of July thirteenth, because they were gonna have three of the four trainings, but that's kind of getting too soon to engage somebody else.
True.
And we thought Ross was gonna do it, so. And he, it sounded like he was busy that weekend anyway, so we're just gonna have to keep working at coordinating it.
Worst case, we just might have to move Jay's stuff, doing great by that.
But they're not gonna want to be there while we're tearing into stuff, so.
Yeah, yeah, just send those to Levi, and then they can, you know, maybe find somebody that will work with him. Any else on the building issues? Anybody else new out there?
Just the same waterfall that's there all the time, Joel even heard it. And it's been there for way long.
Last Saturday with the elevator, yeah, that, that was really coming in.
Cause you go down in the basement and then you pump it out, or?
No, it, it comes out the front door.
It does.
Yeah. But it, it starts at the elevator shaft, it goes down.
We have all the same thing over here, doesn't it, doesn't it leak down low?
Oh, yeah, it does that too.
And then over in the south wall, and then over, and then sure side.
South wall, sure function?
Yeah, above the um, windows we just replaced.
Okay, uh, courthouse round signage.
Okay, I got. Signs. Okay, what we're suggesting. Can I just share my screen?
Sure. Let's see a chat from recorder, I guess energy was gone.
They finished up Saturday.
Cool.
Yeah, all of that stuff all recorded?
So they're gonna take it and clean it up and do the, the QA on it. And then they'll shoot back to us, and then there's, you know, we'll prove them, or anything like that, and then there's uh, there's some storage on their side, and then, then we'll ingest it into our, our system.
Yeah, that was just the first phase, where nowhere close to gone.
We got scanned, basically, that was all the technical stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And now it's a, yeah, now it's a technical part compared where they'll go through and clean up the imagery, and then, then we've got a meeting with Tyler this week, on how they're gonna pull all those images into the, to the recording system.
Okay, so then how do they, if you want to ask for something, then you pull up a name and a connection?
The, yeah, so the recorder's office will have, they'll have the images through their system, and then there's also, I believe, a, a public system too, through US image, that if, if we go through that process, I, I think Theresa knows more about that.
I'm just ordering this, yeah.
We'll let you share.
Well, I, I don't know, it said something about you were holding it. So I, I, it's just as easy though.
Yeah, it's not figured out though, for?
Well, and we want them um, in the corners, where the sidewalk is, where the two, where the sidewalks meet in front of the building, and then out on the diagonal too.
Okay.
I mean, they'll be big and gaudy, and hopefully people will actually see them.
Right.
So.
They're just a, whatever size aluminum sign, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Try to inject, you know, too.
Okay, I'll shoot my weapon, sure.
Did you do it yet?
So Sheriff's Green, uh, Green.
Yeah, I did that.
Yeah.
We'll just share one of those screen.
Audi, or the auditor. She doesn't have her camera with that, who, who's Cal, tell me, tell her, he's contractor from graphic.
I'm just wondering, um, should it be blue and red instead, the, should the signs be blue and red instead of the and have white, or do you like a cross sweater that way? Know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I.
Cause usually handicap signs are blue with white.
Right.
Yeah, they are.
And the white is the only one. Uh, that, and I think they were like, they were both the same, I think, well, maybe it was.
True.
But it, yeah, it's not gonna be, oh, forty-five.
True.
And um, and then we're gonna put lettering on the front, on the white part of the front door, so that they can actually see it, because my few minutes of signing, can't, they don't see until they get too far, and then they try to still go in and try to open the door, because they think, hmm, it's not far.
Right. Yeah.
Signs are for other people, you know. Everyone just can't go in for me.
That's why I know, yeah. You gotta figure it out, get them ordered, and.
We just thought they'd be more visible if they're right there.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Then we can get rid of the one that's under the hanging basket.
Okay.
Yeah, they look good.
That was good to me. Alright, uh, department heads. Anybody have anything they would like to discuss? We got a letter from recorder, so she's covered, I would say.
I guess I did have a couple of things, um, the recorder logger, for the radio traffic, the counties that, that we're in the sharing agreement with now have access to those reporters, and I'm gonna be invoicing them the first of the, of July. So, I knew we'll start on the crystals, yeah. Um, and then also probably, I did talk to you guys about DR as a service, you know, right now, we've got our production data center here, and then we roll everything down into the void, or copy it down there. Uh, but that's another net app that has gone on a service, so we're looking at a couple of options to either renew the service contract on that one and keep it going, or else just to, just to buy the DR as a service, which, which means that we're buying storage and compute and memory from, and firewall services from, uh, from the company, and that way, you know, if something happens to the courthouse, or we gotta switch to that DR, then we just call them, they light it all up. I'll be getting attorney guys with some, with some. As we go forward, so. What, what we're probably looking at doing is getting away from buying hardware to buying service, so instead of a big chunk of money upfront, it will be, you know, that monthly year. Little, little different than what we've been in the past, but it's, it's a, it's a more resilient, fairly, definitely the technology as far as different when something happens to your facility.
Right. Any other department heads, got anything? Take that as a note. Supervisor, yeah.
I had the Verge to manage for the last Thursday evening. Doors and the tenants accept the tunnel portal, uh, a lot of discussion on the uh, getting the new siren out here at the welcome center. Didn't pull it over and set up on that, it's not done. And Mark kind of had uh, some bids, maybe or some ideas about a new building down here at the recycling center. Thinking about maybe getting a grant for it or something. We just took it under advisement, and then also there was a talk on getting ahold of the old building at Manly, the old gym. But we decided against it, it was like, uh, not a good, not a good thing for the board, we wouldn't utilize enough, we have enough facilities between uh, Grafton and the Kansas Gym, the stuff that, why get another building? So, that was discussed, we kind of table all those issues, kind of just, didn't follow through or anything, so, we just, things brought up.
Yeah. Is that it? That's it? Mark?
I had uh, Michael attend it on Zoom meeting. Lots of discussion, they're basically, they're telling us what they're doing to get reopened, to get things back up and running for the kids and all that kind of stuff, so. There's basically a discussion on reopening and, and get through this pandemic here, getting back to normal, hopefully, so. It's basically discussion on reopening and, and get through this pandemic here, getting back to normal, so. That was pretty much all I had.
Well, then I had, uh, the Zoom meeting with the second judicial district. Down for those Zoom battle, what you're sitting. And actually he's gonna be, hopefully, and we got, it makes the city, since that, the old building collapsed, so the old high school. We had some different quarters down there and, uh, now we've got, like, moved into the, I'm not sure, it's on one oh six. It was all my son's computer company at one time.
Um, yeah, nineteenth street.
Whatever it is on one oh six, they're just.
Yeah.
Was the sixty-five.
Yep.
We got half that building now.
Okay.
Now will be their second judicial district is.
Just west of Palm Supply or.
Right across the racks or something, yeah. So, and we might have.
Mercy Ants and stuff in there, yeah.
We're gonna have our first meeting there in, uh, August twenty eighth. And hopefully we can see the new facilities. And then also we got a, got in contact with JB Cashman at a ISAC and we're gonna have another. Zoom meeting on Wednesday, the executive board will, on this twenty eighty, or not twenty, the Housefile twenty eight thirty-four, I guess. Maybe we'll talk about having some line item details. And Bob Lincoln officially resigned last Monday as county social services director. And basically what it did is split, lunch, they actually split the county up, uh, the Saragota, Hancock. Wright, Humboldt, Lester and Pocahontas, or I think be in a new district. And as far as I know, either Cassoot, Curbago and Worth are already going to Northwest Care. And I'm not sure, uh, Emmett County has a choice, either go on Northwest Care or rolling hills. And we'll find out tomorrow, I'll have another meeting with, uh, Northwest Care tomorrow, and we'll figure out where that's, where they're gonna get that from.
This isn't gonna affect service for any people?
No, this will affect any services, we've got all the plans, it's all been, just readjusted, it's just a paper. Will be, it'd be a lot cheaper, we could round back for a lot of extra service, especially the ice stack problem that we had. And Lincoln had all set up for the, uh, campus, he had employee of record, county social service was, and that was six hundred thousand or more that they were spending. Just on some other stuff that he wanted to add down, so he had complete control of the employee.
Basically just on people, not on services.
Right, it's not people, not on services. He want, he wanted the people, he controlled the people, not services.
It's kind of ironic, all of a sudden he's, he's out of there.
Well, it's because he can't fund it, right, there, there's no, there's no funding back.
Well, I think he's trying to get enough repercussion from other county.
Right.
Where you butt heads with them, he's not getting away anymore.
Right.
It's unfortunate it came a year too late, cause that was the best option for us.
Well, it was a good option, but, well, see, we tried it two years ago, but Saragota wouldn't go with us. They didn't want us, they want.
They wanna rock the boat, yeah.
They didn't wanna rock the boat yet, yeah, and so, but, but anyway, what's happened, it's happened and we're moving forward and. Been a good check.
So, good deal. Um, I didn't have anything last week, um, I just did, wanna talk to you guys a little bit about, uh, see that email or text on, uh, from Julie Robb.
Yes.
On Realtor stuff, we gotta start figuring that out.
Yeah.
Um, well, we've obviously got an idea, we're, on what we're, what it's gonna cost for our infrastructure, but how do we wanna?
Well, first we gotta get with Grease because there's no way we can sell the property, and so we have. You know, each lot has to be sold separately, we, but Grease said we can get an agreement. How we can get that sold?
Plus I'm wondering, like, with, with Realtors, obviously, it's probably one of the better things to do is use a Realtor, but with having multiple in the county. Do we need to?
Open them.
Take like an RFP for that?
Yeah.
Or, uh, uh, that's, that's the weird thing, is like, we gotta decide what we're gonna, what we need for them and then how does it get sold?
Right, but we gotta figure out from Grease how we can actually sell. Because, because that's why that one issue with the, uh, fireworks did not go through. Is because first off, they didn't have infrastructure out there. And then once you found out what it was gonna cost, you get the infrastructure backed out. And, uh. That's when we get, basically, we cannot sell without a public, has to sold.
Public hearing.
Huh?
Yeah, public hearing.
Gotta have a public hearing, everything else go through.
That helps out a lot.
So.
Part of keeping signing any purchase of the.
Yeah. Grease was out of work, he sits on how we can work that, work through this. And I think that'd be the next step is to get ahold of Jeff.
We're gonna get final plating done too.
They get, yeah, get final plating done.
And the cost.
And the cost.
Yeah.
But again, we're, we're trying to get this done, but.
Well, essentially when it is done, we get a final plan and we can.
Yeah.
Turn key and try to get. They will advertise, you know, if we're gonna use Realtors or if we're gonna use whatever, we at least have a plan to go from there.
You know, that'll get it developed and buy the whole works.
That'd be the easiest thing in the world, it'd be great. So, that's all I'm just, you know, thinking about, how we're gonna do that, cause, you know, if we get this. Middle or end of July, we need to, yeah, know what.
First, oh, yes, we could have lots of.
Yeah, we could have at least. We have to have even one out, people working on it for us.
Right.
Right as soon as that gets done, so.
Yeah.
But, that's, yeah, that's all I was really wondering about, just what, what we need to do there, so I guess we can send an email to Jeff and. Figure out a process of, of how we're gonna do that and then. Work on that as we get closer to the final, final numbers, final everything too. You know, some of that stuff.
We should call.
What lots are better visual, so are these lots worth more, you know, I, I don't know how that's all gonna work.
And we should get with Jason to find out what's gonna be the hookup cost for sewer and water, is there gonna be any hookup costs, we just got it in there?
And that's. Not only we need to work on our water and sewer rates.
Yeah.
With everybody too.
You know.
Yeah.
And it's available, then we can just start like water and sewer.
Yeah, there's gotta be connection fees when you buy a lot, I mean, we gotta have something to, to get into, which. Like, like some of these lots, we're covering our costs of putting that infrastructure in.
Right.
But we still have the infrastructure to maintain and operate, the original infrastructure, actually, the original water plant, original sewer plant, so now we need that. There just needs to be a set fee on anybody that ever hooks onto it, regardless of what.
Yeah.
If signs develop across the street and they hook into ours, we gotta have a connection fee, you know, no matter what, there should be something set and then we can set a rate still, so. I guess I'll send an email to Jeff on that and then I'll, I'll talk with Jason a little bit and see if we can get together and work on, uh. Get some rates figured out, we probably need to meet with, I know Kamigou needs to be jacked up and we also need to meet with, uh, Holiday and.
Well, yeah.
I'll get on that soon, so, okay.
Well, and when you talk about rates, you end up having a hall, last time it was everybody.
Yeah, I'll make, and it's just, it's just a percentage thing and that's, I think, when Jason and I talked before, that's kinda how we're gonna stick with it. If anybody new comes in, it'll still be percentages until you get to like a certain point. Where you, then you can say so much per gallon used, so much of that, but as for just the five customers that are there, you know, as we go. It's still gonna be a percentage there.
Right.
But what it'll do is it'll make Diamond Joe's cheaper, everybody's a little cheaper coming down. But that's, that's one of those things where you gotta figure out how much water usage they have too, so. Alright, uh, anything else for the agenda? Just our, when we go meeting hopefully next month there. Okay, other than that, so you get started entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
I, opposed, he is adjourned, thank you.